Good afternoon and welcome to the Burlington City Council Candidate Forum conducted by the Greater Burlington Partnership Government Relations Committee. My name is Eva Castillo and I will be your moderator for this afternoon. Our timekeeper is Stephen Brody with the Greater Burlington Partnership. In the interest of time and the fairness of the other candidates, I'm going to ask each candidate to observe Stephen's signal and stop your response when time is up. The forum will consist of rounds of questions to which each candidate will have up to two minutes to respond. A decision was made by the Government Relations Committee to have candidates answer the questions imprompt. In other words, they have not seen the questions in advance. Questions from the audience or online will be reviewed to ask if that, if time permits. So candidates are seated in alphabetic order. To my right is Antonio Bailey and to my left is Teri Schnack. So let's get started. I'll have you introduce yourself and share why you are running for the seat on the city council. Antonio, I'll start with you.
My name's Antonio Bailey. I have been in Burlington for 28 years and I know I can make a difference with our community and the city as well.
Thank you. Teri?
Good afternoon. My name's Teri Schnack. I've lived in Burlington for about 16 and a half years. I'm a retired small business owner. The reason I wanted to run for city council is because Burlington's my home and I believe in taking care of home. As I said, I'm retired now. I have the time and availability to put in the work that's needed to serve the community well. Thank you.
All right. So first question. What role should local government play to create an environment that would grow our population and attract additional workforce? Teri, I'll start with you.
I believe probably one of the key things to do would be doing a, work closely with the Grow Greater Burlington partnership there. They're the ones that really have the insight track to businesses and economic development. As evident at the last council meeting, in the discussion about rental inspections, the turnout of people that showed up as landlords there and voicing their concerns, I believe that did not fall on deaf ears and I believe these people were listened to with their concerns. So working hand in hand with people that are doing things to promote our, and make our community better, I believe the city has to do that is to work hand in hand, not cripple them but help them, help them out along the way to make our community better and to grow housing. There are several programs in the city right now such as help for doing sidewalk repairs. There's also a tax abatement program for major renovation type things on buildings and properties where property taxes could get rolled back a little bit to help with those kinds of things. Those are all positive things that makes our city look better to the general public and when it looks better, people feel better about it and that's what brings business to our community as well.
Thank you. Antonio?
Well, our city does play a major role in how this town looks and how it exceeds expectations. I think city government, including in selling our city, keep selling for businesses to come in, plant their seed here in town, grow the infrastructure. Basically, your employment rates will pick up. Offer jobs, good housing. Everything we need is right here in this town and our government currently structured right now is doing that. They're selling it. We need to keep selling it. We see tours coming in all the time. People ask questions, what's this, what's that? And it's looking very good. They want to be a part of that. We need to offer that to different people. Hey, come to Burlington, set up, grow with the community. The more we do that, the better we'll be in the end. I love this community and I love the people here and I love our city government.
All right. So you guys talked about housing. So how engaged are you in the city's housing issues and discussions? And what are some of the strategies you might suggest for improving housing conditions and affordability in the community? Antonio, I'll start with you.
I think what the city's doing right now is reducing the years of inspections is great. From five to three, that works. It keeps landlords on top of properties, building them up, making them look great. I was out last night for about three hours in the rain, walking around, looking how some landlords have improved properties. As more we can keep doing that as well as lower some of the housing costs, that would definitely help out some of the people in this town that's saying rent is way too high, which I think landlords in the city are working on that to reduce things to make it more affordable for everyone.
All right. Thank you. Teri?
Like I said at the last city council meeting, it was about a three-hour meeting. Landlords of rental properties had a lot of input and discussion as to concerns about changing the inspection frequency. I commend the current council right now on passing the motion to make sure that the discussion stayed on the books, that they had to continue, continue looking into and addressing these issues, but also realize there's some more work that needs to be done there. I did visit with, I believe it was three of the landlords after the council meeting, thanking them for coming and such. They do have some real concerns there. You know, these are the people that are buying a lot of the properties that are falling into disrepair. They're, they're putting their efforts and their money into these properties to make them better and trying to provide cost-effective housing for them. We also need to take a look at downtown, the many apartments and upstairs-type studios that are available. I believe that we have a very diverse housing market. I believe the housing market is getting better and more available to a wide range of people of different financial backgrounds and such. So I think we're in the right path. I think we just need to encourage the people that are actually investing into our community and keep on that path.
All right. Thank you. So there is referendum on the ballot to build a fire, a third fire station in Burlington to meet the national safety standards of a four-minute response time. It's a two-part question. So do you support the referendum? If the referendum does not pass, what do you see as the city council's role in addressing these issues? Teri?
I am in favor of public safety and without the third fire station available, I believe that puts a questionable safety to our, to our citizens right there. So I'm behind the, the fire station referendum, put the third station in. I believe all of Burlington needs to be served by fire and ambulance. The current conditions where they're using a rental space with just an ambulance, it's a pretty crude setup right there. There's no fire truck in the northwest part of Burlington. I think that's, that's a real concern as well. If the referendum does pass, I think the city council needs to take a real close look at whatever plans are decided for that third fire station, separating wants and needs to make sure that we're getting the best value for dollars being spent and still accomplishing the goals of a third fire station. If the referendum does not pass, I think the city needs to continue look, looking for an alternative solution or an alternative location to better serve those people in the northwestern part of the city, to give them that, that fire and ambulance response time that's needed. You know, if, if you're ever sitting at a red stoplight and you're, you're in a hurry, that light seems to change forever. You know, it takes, takes forever for it to happen. If, if you're having a heart attack or your loved one is passed out, you know, minutes seem like hours. So response time is, is critical, very, very critical. So I, I think it's something that has to be addressed in one form or another.
All right. Antonio?
I think I am all for that as well because it does shorten the response time, especially if there's a cardiac event or a house fire where we can minimize the damage of people losing everything. A shorter response time is good, but the only thing I have with that is we have to be consistent in staying with that. If we're not consistent enough, it's going to fall by the wayside. And building that station is going to be a big plus on that side of town. It's going to serve every residence. That shorter response time is going to be able to get there to help those people in need. Also, we have this one on this side of town as well. It also cuts that response time down as well if they need assistance.
All right. Thank you. So the next question was keeping going with safety. I lost it. We'll just jump to this one. So since communication with public is a key requirement for public office, what specific ways will you work to listen and respond to your constituents' input? Antonio?
I would basically sit there, speak to everybody about the same thing, not just say, I'm going to do this and I'm going to do that. We're going to work together to come to an understanding and a way to make things work between the city and the people versus we're going to do it this way and that's the way it's going to be. No, we want to work together. We want to engage in the community, get more compute, community support and engagement on ideas and issues, take that up with the current council to see if this is feasible or is there a way we can work to make this happen? That is the key. Being, being able to communicate and engage and bridge that gap with people not be afraid to step up and say things that need to be said, that's what we want. Things can't get done if we're not communicating. We want to communicate. I'll be out, I'll engage with the public. We will find out if things can be done, if not. Basically, we're going to be transparent.
All right. Teri?
I don't take the opportunity to serve on city council lightly. I take it as a, very much a priority in my life. I'm retired right now, so I don't have a job that can interfere with me serving and doing my duties. I think I have shown with my past here that I have attended every one of the city council meetings, every one of the work sessions. I believe I was the only person from the general public that sat through the budget meetings. The last meeting that the mayor and city manager had down at the port of Burlington, I was the only person from the general public that showed up for that. I did show up for the Friends of Cascade celebration for the grant type of thing. So I am out and about. My wife and I make a concerted effort to spend at least, at least one day out of the month, we try to get two or three, to go visit downtown, visit with shop owners and things, to see how things are going, to, to hear their concerns or, or, or things of that sort. I want to be very transparent. I want to be very approachable. I want to be very open. Have my cellphone in my pocket all of the time. I am on Facebook Messenger. I do have email address and I believe having been a small business owner, I'm a pretty approachable guy and, and don't take offense to bringing up any kind of a conversation with anybody, discuss anything that's going on. So again, it's communication, being approachable and answering questions. And if I don't have the answer to the question, I'm going to find it out for you and get back to you with it. So that's how I think I need to address that.
All right. So what are your, are your thoughts on the city's sidewalk improvement plan and what approach would you like to take to improve walkability and connectivity in the community? Teri?
Well, there is a sidewalk plan in, in place for repairing sidewalks and there are an awful lot of sidewalks that are in disrepair. I think part of the problem there is people aren't aware of the, of some of these programs. If they go to the city website, they will find answers there, but sometimes people need a little prodding. So I think promoting what the city of Burlington has available for people needs to, needs to happen a little bit more. We need to, I guess advertise ourselves a little bit more, I think would be a good thing. Some of the sidewalks, I know there's a, there's talk of a project on Agency Street, goes past, I think it starts where the last project ended, about the Hy-Vee gas station on Agency and then goes on past Curran. One of the things I was glad to see was they do not plan on putting bike lanes on the street, but they are planning on a five-foot wide sidewalk on the north side of the street. So you know, the bicycle path thing, we have to look at safety on those things and I think a plan like that makes it very, very well, especially with the building, I believe it's community health going on Curran and Agency. So accessibility that way. But like I said, there's a lot of sidewalks that are in disrepair, especially when the weather's nice. People like to get out, take a walk, look around, see what, see what their neighbors have done, if they've done something new in their front yard. Hey, maybe that's a project we want to do at our home, you know? Get, get a little neighborhood competition going on, who can have the, the nicest lawn or, and type of thing. Those are all things that, that grow the community as well. It's called community pride, you know? So I think the city has done a good job on working on that. I think it needs to be promoted a little bit more, but I think they're on the right track. I'd like to be a part of promoting that.
All right. Antonio?
The city has a plan for that and they have step by step of what they're going to do as far as the sidewalks. Already I am starting to see changes for some, some sidewalks. They're looking better, they're looking good. Also, some landlords are replacing these sidewalks as well because they're on their properties as well. I agree with, what the city's doing. They put together a plan, they're following their plan. The whole point is we're just trying to speed that plan up to make sure everyone knows this is getting done. It's going to take a little time and I think, you know, in the end, we can maybe offer for some residents that decide that, hey, I'm going to do my own and get it, you know, done on my own. We can maybe prevent and present vouchers to those people that are doing it on their own. As far as the city's plan to keep working on those, they're very vigilant on doing it. I'm seeing a lot of signs going up, you know, we're going to be working in this area and it's starting to look good. So some of the sidewalks are being taken care of. It's just a little bit, it's a slow process, but it is being taken care of. So we're just going to stay on it until it's completely done.
Antonio, I'll start with you with this one. So do you support the Cascade Bridge project? And if so, should it be open to pedestrians, vehicles, or both?
Yes, I do support that because as I stated before, Cascade Bridge is a part of Burlington's history and it should be treated as part of Burlington's history. I think there was something that went up in the Beacon the other day that they received a million-dollar grant to go ahead and start the resurfacing and construction on that bridge, which that's great, but I know we have a long way to go until that bridge is completely, to where it's safe and open for pedestrians and cars. I mean, for years, when I first got here, the first place I drove was Cascade Bridge and loved that bridge. I loved driving under the bridge just to hear cars going over the top of that bridge. And I said, man, this is, this is pretty neat here. We need to keep this going. And I think there is a plan in place to keep that going. We're going to work on getting more funding for that bridge. We're going to get that bridge done. I think it's a good thing to have it open for cars and pedestrians. It's a shorter drive for those residents in that area as well as our bike paths. Most people ride bikes and that bridge is not open, they have to turn around and go the opposite way. But we want them to be able to ride around our town without having any issues or obstructions. I am all for that bridge. We will get it done in this town.
All right. Teri?
I am 100% in favor of putting, replacing Cascade Bridge. I'm 100% behind, it needs to be a, a vehicle and pedestrian bridge as well. I think that would give such a great link from the port of Burlington down here, the downtown area, on out to Craypool Park. And with all of the people that are starting to move into downtown and to the apartments and things, I, I think that gives them a good access as well. You know, Craypool Park, Dankworth Park is such a beautiful area. We're just so blessed to be able to have an area like that and to keep accessibility to that, to everybody is definitely a plus. The one thing that I do want to make sure happens though is we don't want to build any more Cascade Bridges like we're done in the past. And what I mean by that is we don't just have something built with no maintenance plan in place of how we're going to maintain it and let it go into a state of disrepair that we have nothing. So making sure there's a maintenance plan put in place with the new bridge that would be done with Cascade Bridge is a must for me to be able to vote yes, that this is the way to go. That goes with any project that goes on in town though. We've got to make sure that we're preserving and protecting what money we've spent already to make sure that it endures.
All right. Thank you. So knowing the recent property tax legislation that passed last spring will lead to a reduced tax revenues for municipalities, how would you balance the general fund? For example, cut services or seek alternative revenues beyond property taxes? Teri?
Money's going to get tight and it's no different than what it is in everybody's home or anybody's business. You know, there's only so much to go around and it becomes kind of a juggling act. I don't want to cut services. I believe my number one priority was citizens need to feel safe in town. They need to have police protection, fire protection, and ambulance service. I also believe each one of the department heads need to take a real close look and make sure they have a real sharp pencil that they take a real hard look at wants versus needs to keep things going. One of the things discussed was a 1% franchise fee as a possible revenue source to offset what the state of Iowa has done to us. I'm kind of on the fence on that and I'd like to hear more citizen input on that. The 1% option tax, I believe, stands a chance of going away. So if the city changed that to a 1% franchise fee for the, for the homeowner, it wouldn't change their bill. The problem comes in, the not-for-profits and major industry, it does affect. And major industry and not-for-profits are the ones that are already doing things to make our community better. So, and it didn't help with Alliant Energy also coming out with a letter of increases in electricity and gas prices at the same time. But it's kind of, it's going to be, like I said, it's going to be kind of a balancing act. Everything's going up in price. Groceries have gone up, you know, every, prices go up for everything, but city services go up too. So with the franchise fee, I think it's something we need to take a real hard look at and see how does it really affect everybody and is that really the right thing to do? Cutting police service, ambulance and fire is definitely not something that needs to be done, but budgetary work's going to be a lot of work coming up in the next five years. So.
All right. Antonio?
I, you know, I kind of agree with Mr. Schnack. You know, any services being cut as far as bus service, police force, it's, it's, it's things that can be restructured. And I think everything that they do to the fact that things are rising, taxes are rising, everything is getting expensive. We know that. It's coming. That's the price of inflation. It is coming. But I think us as a city can look inside, restructure to where we're not losing services or no one's getting cut. We're just restructuring to where it all works, to where we don't have to cut anything. Basically, we just look inside, say, here, here, we're going to do this now, but you're not, it's not getting cut. It's a restructure. If everyone looks inside their organization and say, this is what we can do and what we can do, rework it to where we lose nothing. Library, police force, bus service, nothing. Rework it. Because if you rework it more, nine times out of 10, there is something there that we've missed. We can do it 101 million times, but there's, out of that times, there's one time that we're going to miss something that could have fixed it. We can restructure. We know the state put cities in a improbable situation by cutting services, but as the city of Burlington, I think we can restructure things to make things work where we will not have to cut anything.
All right. So Teri kind of touched on this, this question here a little bit. The city of Burlington is looking into the utility franchise fee. What is your understanding of this fee and why is it necessary? And what is your position? Antonio?
Well, I wasn't quite sure about a franchise fee. Basically, if that's something that can help the city of Burlington, yes, we're all for that. But it has to benefit businesses and the community. If it doesn't benefit the community or our businesses, then what's the point in even having it? It has to benefit both. If we're, if it's only benefiting one, then how's that helping our people is the question? I wasn't really aware of a franchise fee, but I'm glad he brought it up. It is definitely something that can help everyone, not just the people, but it can also help our city government as well.
All right. Teri, do you have any other thing to add to that question?
Well, like I said, we're standing the chance of losing the 1% option tax as well. So if a 1% franchise tax was added in, the, the average homeowner wouldn't see a change in their utility bill. Even if it went to like 2%, I think it comes up to a little over $2 a month increase, which, which would help with the city budget. But again, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned about the not-for-profits and also large industry. Large industry, I believe, gets a different rate for utility or electric use. And I know some of the manufacturing facilities use a lot of electricity in manufacturing. So 1% could be a huge cost to them. So you know, you kind of got to weigh, weigh it. It's a balancing act, like I said. If you're increasing cost to, to major industry, what's that going to do to affect how many employees they're able to, to keep on and hire and things? So again, I think it's something that would have to be studied pretty deeply and, and all of the pluses and minuses need to be weighed out to really make a fully informed decision of what's best that way. So I'm, I'm going to say I'm uncommitted at this point with, with needing more information as to how it would really affect our community as a whole.
Okay. All right. So I think you guys, I promised I didn't see the questions, but you guys are kind of reading my dialogue here. So the Burlington Library will be losing its funding source due to the recent legislation from the state of Iowa. This is forcing some hard decisions to fund shortfalls due to the levy caps. How do you propose that the Burlington Library be supported going forward? Are you supportive of a franchise fee on utilities provided a part of that is used for funding the library? Teri, I'll start with you.
You know, the city of Burlington is very, very fortunate with caring, loving hearts of people. There are, there are trust funds that are set up, but there's also a very active group called the Friends of the Library. They, they do book sales and a lot of volunteerism and things like that at the library. Before the meeting, I was sitting, I was standing at the back of the room, kind of looking out the window at the trees changing colors and stuff. And I looked down there at the library and I counted about 40 cars in the parking lot. And this was like 3:30 in the afternoon, you know, on a, on a Wednesday. So you know, the library is a very, very important facility to our community. Anybody can use the library, any age group, anytime. There's so many services that are provided that the, we need to make sure that the library is, is funded. I believe the library falls into a case of needs instead of wants. So.
Antonio?
That's funny. You just said that. I like that. That, that is, you know, to piggyback off, you said, we don't want to see funding cut anywhere. As I said, once again, restructure without cutting anybody or losing any type of services. Our library is a very, very important source in this community. It also helps people that can't get out to go find jobs, that live in the walking area to come in and apply for those jobs, to get signed up. Also, it's a good educational way for people to come in and learn about, hey, I'm going to jump online and go take courses, but I don't have internet. Very good source to come here to Very good source to come here to find out what you need. We wanna keep that. We don't wanna lose any type of funding with that. That library is very important to our community, very important. And as I said, if we all sat down, look at what we're doing, we will definitely miss something on the way to avoid missing things. We will find it to where nothing is cut.
All right. Burlington and West Burlington are sister cities. How do you envision greater collaborations between the Burlington and West Burlington communities, including and beyond city government agreements? Antonio?
Liaison. You gotta have a liaison, a representative for Burlington, a representative for West Burlington. Technically, if you really look at it, we're just one, we're just called West Burlington in Burlington. And just being literally seconds apart, you know, liaison, you know, one hand knows what the next hand's is doing. And they both feel like, hey, we need to come together to figure this out as a community for both communities. To me, West Burlington is Burlington. We're just one big community, working together, putting pen to paper, a plan, and a group of people in a room agreeing to disagree, to where we finally agree that we can make things work. It would be very, very, very great for the community of Burlington and West Burlington.
All right. Terry?
My business that I retired from was located in West Burlington, so I've got a little bit of history with West Burlington and Burlington as well. Both are wonderful communities. It's a shame that they have to be separate, but I understand combining West Burlington with Burlington will never happen because there's community pride, you know? And I get it, you know? Like I said, with my business, you always specified, hey, we're from West Burlington, but at home, hey, I'm from Burlington, you know? It's just kinda that mindset, and we'll never get past that. But I believe there is a lot of mutual agreement and understanding between the city of Burlington and West Burlington as well. I think the lines of communication have been open. I think, especially with fire and ambulance, there has been a lot of mutual aid, helping back and forth. And I think that's what neighbors are supposed to do. You're supposed to help each other out in time of need. The Street Sweeper, for example, at Public Works, Burlington had that. West Burlington leased it from Burlington for a while. I don't know if they got their own or not, but, you know, sharing of equipment, again, just working together for a community or an area as a whole. I think we do a good job of that, keeping those lines of communications open between Burlington and West Burlington, and continuing, working together as good neighbors, is important. I don't think we should lose sight of that and continue what we're doing right now, being a good neighbor.
So, Terry, if elected, what unique skillset or expertise will you bring, and how will you leverage that experience for the betterment of Burlington?
I don't take running for city council lightly. I take this very seriously. As I stated before, I've been to every city council meeting, every work session, budget meetings. I've been to several different programs, like they had one down at the depot a while back to walk through the building, the time with city manager and the mayor, the celebration for Cascade Bridge. I've been involved in all of that. The unique attributes that I bring in are, I was a small business owner for 27 years on my own. I understand the struggles of business, I understand budgets, I understand the balancing act between wants and needs. But I'm, like I said, I'm also retired. And I know to be an active person on the city council, you have to be available at several different times. And I have that time set aside to be able to serve as needed for these forums and the meet and greets and any other function. I'm there for it. So, I'm very, very committed to this, and I'm committed to represent the citizens of Burlington. This isn't all, this isn't about me. This is about giving back to my community and being part of my community, being approachable, being available, being open and transparent, and trying to make, help make the decisions that are, what are best for the Burlington community.
All right. Antonio?
I'm a leader. I never knew I was a leader until one man gave me the opportunity to lead. He gave me that opportunity, and I didn't look back. I got active, and I stayed active. Whether youth, when our youth have issues, no matter what time it is, if it's late at night, I get a phone call, hey, we need you. I'm there. It's never about time with me. I'm always available. There's no such thing as time. If I'm off doing something and you need me, I'm gonna stop doing what I'm doing to go help that person in need. I am a leader. I am a people person. I am not shy. I am very open to people, and I'm very transparent. And that's what makes me an effective leader. And if elected to the council, you will continue to see that leadership grow by getting more active in the community, as I am now, and being vigilant, helping the people, not just, you know, telling them this is how it should be, literally getting down and dirty and working with the people. That is what I plan on doing if elected to council. I have been a successful businessman for the last five years. I am the former owner of a semi-pro football team that someone told me that would never, ever take off, and it did for 17 years. I don't quit, I fight, and I'm not gonna take no for an answer. I get it done, and that's what I wanna do for our city, get it done.
All right. So, the Iowa Army ammunition plant is undergoing a major modernization and expansion over the next few years, with the project investing anywhere from $1.5 to $2 billion. What do you see as the city council's role in supporting this project?
I think our council's role in supporting that project is hearing them out and see what they need to happen, versus, you know, just jumping in and saying, we support, because it's a city. Before you do anything, city person, anything you do in life, you have to fill it out, you have to talk it over, you have to investigate things before you make a decision on what's going to happen. Everything needs to be thought out. It's a thought process, it's a process. And if our city's on board, we're making that happen with the ammunition plant, we do that. There are workers there. We need our workers to be happy, we need them to be safe. And if our city's on the board for that, so am I. But always, before you do anything, you have people look into it, you investigate it, to see if it's a good thing to support, or if it's something you know that they're supporting you, but you always have to look at the facts and lay it out on the table before you agree to anything.
All right. Terry?
With the ammunition's plant expansion, I think the city of Burlington's gonna see an influx of people, just like they did when the Iowa fertilizer plant was built. Rental houses got filled up fast, and housing became an issue. I believe this, in this case, though, I believe there's enough housing currently that should be able to satisfy a lot of those things. So, I believe the city of Burlington's been very active at looking at that and preparing for that. Not everybody that came to work on the Iowa fertilizer plant left town. There's quite a few people that stayed on and called Burlington their home, and we're gonna hope for that as well, an influx in our population and such. It's also gonna bring in good-paying jobs and benefits for people that, you know, the number-one reason people move is because that's where my job is at, that's where my income source for my way of life is coming from. So, I take it as a positive, very, very positive thing for Burlington and the surrounding communities as well. And I think Burlington's ready for it. I think the city of Burlington has a lot of the amenities, the different restaurants, the cultural and entertainment venues that are available, the parks, the schools, the library. I mean, there's a lot of stuff in place here to make a lot of these people wanna stay and wanna say, hey, I work at the Iowa ammunition plant, I live in Burlington, Iowa. So, I look at it as a positive. I believe the city will definitely do whatever they need to help make this, you know, as good a transition for everybody as can be, but I'm pretty excited about the influx of new people.
All right. In recent years, retail and dining options have expanded throughout the community. These additions help build quality of life. Some believe increasing tourism is a way to sustain a vibrant retail and commercial sector in the community. Do you agree? And where are the opportunities to expand visitor traffic? Terry?
I think visitor traffic has been increasing steadily over the last couple of years, and that's pretty evident by the Delta Queen and the Viking cruise ships coming in, the bicycle, the Criterium, the soccer tournaments that they have out of the Recplex. I think these are all types of things that are encouraging people from out of town to come visit Burlington and see some of the amenities and things that are going on. If, I believe, I read that there was 15 new businesses in the downtown of Burlington in the last year. There's some pretty unique restaurants and stores and things, venues that you don't get from the big-box stores, that makes it very, very unique. And Burlington is very unique, you know? We have things that other cities don't have. We're one of 146 cities in the world that was named Tree City. So, I, I just, all I can say is, I encourage entrepreneurism. Having been a small business owner for 27 years, I encourage it. It's not always an easy path, but it's worth it in the long run. You know, Burlington really is a great place to live, work, and grow. And we're gonna live up to that model. Thank you.
All right. Antonio?
The new restaurants and businesses downtown has been great, and it's brought in a lot of people. I was down there the other night, and I was walking, and I walk a lot sometimes. And I was just watching how many new people were coming in, just saying, hey, this is a nice place, you know, they wanted to check it out to see. And that's good. We wanna keep doing that. We wanna keep building that infrastructure, keep selling our city to the people that can come in, hey, I wanna move to Burlington. Good, we have a place for you. Burlington always has a place for people. You just gotta wanna do it. I was out at the Recplex the other day, and parking was crazy. I mean, that showed me, hey, people enjoy coming to this town, and they have fun doing it, you know? Total strangers, never knew them, laughed for a whole hour with them, never knew them. And they were in town for a soccer game. And I just walked out there, and it was great to see. That's what we wanna keep doing, building our town, promoting it, selling it. The more we do that, the influx of people will come in. Encourage people to move to this town. We have things other towns don't have. The more people we bring in, the better the infrastructure will improve, and the more revenue will come into this town as well.
All right, thank you all. So, do we have any questions, audience, online? Okay. All right, so, we're just gonna move into closing remarks. Antonio, I'll have you share with us what sets you apart from other candidates, 60 seconds.
Being a leader. The ability to get things done, the drive to not quit, that sets me apart from my predecessor. And it's just, I take no for an answer. Either A, we're gonna get it done, or we're not gonna get it done, but I'm going to find a better way to get it done. I don't quit. I am a fighter, I will not quit. If elected, I will be the person that I'm sitting here today saying I'm going to be, that is the person I'm going to get times 100. I am a leader, and I wanna lead this great city into new heights for years to come.
All right, thank you. Terry?
I believe what I bring is that I've shown my commitment to the city of Burlington. Like I said, I've been to all of the council and work session meetings and stuff. I've gotten to know a lot of the staff on the city, and we've developed a relationship that they're not afraid to say hi to me if they see me out in public, and they're not afraid if I come up and I have a question for them about a certain topic. So, we've already got a working rapport as well. I'm retired, I've got the time and the energy to devote to this position 100% of the time. It is a priority, I do take it very, very seriously. Burlington's my home. I take care of home. So, I wanna be a part of that, making sure that we're moving forward in the right direction. And I'd ask for your vote. Thank you.
All right. So, I want to thank each of you for your interest in serving the Burlington community. Public service can often be a thankless job, but we need dedicated individuals to serve. I wanna thank the Greater Burlington Partnership and the Government Relations Committee for hosting this event, and thank those in the audience and here, here, and those who have been watching or listening online for your interest in the city council election. Please vote for the candidates of your choice in the city of Burlington on Tuesday, November 7th. Have a good afternoon.